I appreciate you for coming out tonight. There's not, I know there's not a big crowd here, but Celine River Chronicle is gracious enough to come out and we're being livestreamed tonight. So, I'm real thankful for that. I'm gonna start out with just, and I'm not going to sit here and read every slide for you, but I thought to start out with, we would just go over and discuss what is standards-based education in general. It's a system designed to engage students and enhance their learning. It's to help them to develop 21st century learning skills. And it will use a lot of technology. It will help students collaborate and do teamwork. And this year at Brunson, that's been a big adjustment, is just teaching students how to collaborate and work in teams. Students will be required to think and use higher level thinking skills. It's a system designed to engage students and enhance their learning. It's a guaranteed and viable curriculum. I don't know if everyone's aware, but this year we've had a big curriculum change. We're no longer doing Arkansas frameworks. We're now under the new Common Core State Standards. The Common Core State Standards are set out so that everyone knows what students need to learn, needs to learn before moving to the next level. We all at Brunson have a deep commitment to children, and we want every child to learn, and we expect every child to meet high standards so that he or she can succeed in life. This has been kind of an adjustment for our teachers. For years, teachers have been used to standing in front of the classroom, doing all the teaching, and students just sit back and do all the listening, and students have become used to us just entertaining them. But with the new standards-based, teachers, the teachers serve more as a facilitator, and are partners in learning and working with students. And students set their own learning goals. Also, a great thing about it is students have a choice in how they demonstrate learning. In a traditional system, time is the constant and learning is the variable. With the standards-based approach, right the opposite is true. Students will move at their own pace, which honors natural development differences. You know, all students don't reach the same point in learning at the same time, so with this, they work at their own pace. However, the teacher will intervene as needed, and the teacher can redirect the pacing for student learning. Ms. Johnson's gonna explain to us a little bit about the differences between traditional and what we're doing.
In traditional, and another term for the traditional, what we're doing now is called standards reference. In standards reference, we still have grades, as you see, kindergarten through 12th grade. And I know some of you in the room know when this type of system was created. Anybody wanna guess a year? 1892. In 1892, the Committee of Ten were appointed to establish the education system. It was grades one through eight, and then four years of high school. And primarily, other than adding kindergarten and some preschool along the way, we pretty much have the same system that we had in 1892. Within the traditional setting, we have curriculum, we have instruction, we have assessment based on standards. That's why it's called standards reference, because still, in the traditional system, time is constant. There are report cards. A student comes to kindergarten, and they work on kindergarten standards for 178 days. And after 178 days, they go to first grade, where they work on first grade standards, ready or not. Now, we know that with developmental differences, some students are ready for those standards before others are. If we, the, if we continue to move students along, an achievement gap continues to grow. And of course, then on the other hand, we have some students who have mastered all of those skills, yet we still put them through the same curriculum, even though they're ready for more challenging work. So this system continues, same thing, second grade, second grade standards. And that continues through eighth grade, and then core standards through high school. That's standards reference. In standards base, we have curriculum levels. We have the curriculum divided into levels. There's still the curriculum levels, instruction, assessment. There's still report cards. In this system, however, let's take, for example, a student might be working in what would be the traditional level of sixth or seventh grade, curriculum levels six or seven, and reading. However, in math, they might only be ready for levels four. So in the standards-based system, students are met where they are academically, and then challenged to move forward. Again, required content. If they finish the required content early at the high school level, then they could specialize or graduate early, which some of our students do that now. And of course, with CBIC being across the street, that would set us up for students being able to specialize and get college credit. I believe now our students are able to get maybe up to 15 hours of college credit while they're still in high school. Again, we have curriculum levels, and each level identifies the targeted knowledge to be learned. And we, we're calling this targeted knowledge measurement topics. And our teachers have done a lot of work defining the measurement topics according to Common Core, and writing scales. The bottom line, learning the constant, time the variable. Students who are ready to move to the next level will be able to do so at any time during the year. It won't be, let's get out of school in May, and then come back in August and have a curriculum gap. It's they'll come back and pick up right where they left off. Students who need help mastering a skill, they'll get that help before they move to the next level. So this will eliminate both social promotion and retention. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Ms. Croggins for guiding principles.
All right, our vision is based on these guiding principles. Students learn different, in different timeframes. As we all know, we all don't learn the same thing at the same time. And we have to take that into consideration when dealing with students. They learn in different timeframes. Students learn in different ways. There are different, every one of us in this room would have a different learning style. Well, it's the same way with students. They all learn in different ways. Success breeds success and influences self-esteem, attitude, and motivation. Many times, if a student feels they can succeed at something, they will work harder and try harder, and it just improves their self-esteem. Mistakes are inherent in learning. And when we're learning and we're trying something new, we all make mistakes, and we have to remember that when talking with students and teaching. Students will be assigned to a learning level based on their performance and needs. And this year at Brunson, we're, we've purchased the NUIA assessment. We've not, we're not doing target testing anymore. We're doing NUIA. And when students go in there and take that, immediately, we get the results back, and we can tell their weaknesses and their strengths, and we zoom in on their weaknesses. Students will be assigned to a homeroom with the same aged peers. What will be different? Brunson will become a district conversion charter school, but remain part of the Warren School District, just like Eastside New Vision Charter. And at this time, I want Ms. Sarah Weaver, she's gonna come, she's the principal at Eastside New Vision Charter, and she's gonna come explain to you some of the changes and the differences that they're doing at Eastside.
You should have received a handout, and it's really small print, and we even enlarged it, Ms. Kathy, this morning, and I'm thinking it's gotten smaller as the night has gone on. This is kind of our roadmap, and as you can see, it says ramping up, and that's where we started, when we started our journey. And so, we have revisited this part of standards bases, doing a plan-do-check and adjust. And some people say that A's act, but either one means that you're going, if you need to make an adjustment, or you're gonna act on what you've discovered when you've looked at your PDCA. So as we were looking through our ramping up and then our implementation, there were some things that we felt like we're doing a really good job on, and there are some things that if we were giving ourselves a score, we would say we were probably at a score of a two, and not where we needed to be at a three. But that being said, we have given ourselves a three-year implementation plan, or a three-year plan to have it finished. The state actually gave us five years with our charter, but we wanted to giddy up and get there. And so, you know, we know that if in three years, if we need to extend that, we can, because that was self-imposed. But one of the things that we realized as we were looking through this process, that we have not established a tool to monitor the culture as far as determining if we are staying true to being learner-centered. Now, if you ask me, did I think that? I would say yes. But, you know, we feel like, you know, we're all about data, and using that data to drive student learning. So we will be looking for a tool to use in, so that we can keep a check on our culture as far as it being learner-centered. Everything that's bolded on this sheet are the things that we feel like we still need to attend to, or that we need to move to Level 3, but we're not there yet. And one of those things is, Ms. Regina talked about the scale work that our teachers have done in developing the measurement topics and the learning targets. And right now, I would say that we are struggling, and you probably don't wanna hear that if you're a parent and you have a student in school, with teaching, we know that we have learning targets that are year-long. You will hear my teachers, if you listen to them talk, and they would say, but that's year-long, that's ongoing. But as a parent, when you get a report, you're wanting to see that your child's gotten a three. But they may not be there yet, because it's a year-long skill. And that year-long skill, an example of that in third, Level 4, which is traditionally third grade, would be multiplication and division. That's introduced, but that's also ongoing, and they'll be using that skill throughout the year. And using that skill when they're teaching other skills that are short-term, that wouldn't take a whole year for that process to be learned. So that's one thing that we're still working with, on identifying those skills that we know are year-long. They've identified them, but working those into those short-term. And I know that's a little confusing, but it's something that we know that we need to use to work on, and we will be doing that through units. And again, we're exploring units with Common Core that we have moved to. They do have units established, and we are looking at those. And you know, when I was in taught school, our units were like, we had a cowboy unit. And we did a lot of fun things, a lot of fuzzy and fluff. But that's not what these units are about. It's about the learning, and it's about moving our students from where they are to where they need to be. On that first row, I think what's most important, if you look all the way to the right, that whole box is bolded. That's kinda like, oh! But that is where our students should be able to articulate what it is that they need to know, and, you know, why do they need to know that? But that being said, because our students aren't there yet, we're working with our students. They have established learning goals. They have had data dialogue with their teachers, and they've gotten that effective feedback. It just, when you see the teacher sitting one-on-one with your child, and they're talking about what their learning target is, and the cha, and the teacher doesn't say what it is, the child tells the teacher what they've been working on, and then they're able to graph where they've gotten to. You know, that's that child having ownership of their learning. We don't, we're not there yet. Number one, my kids that are down Productive Parkway, which formerly would have been third grade, they're having to relearn. They've, you know, this is new to them. If they weren't in a lab classroom last year, they're used to traditional school. On the other hand, my five-year-olds, it's not, it's, school's new. Everything's new to them. So it's not something different, other than they're at school, and it's maybe different than preschool. So even though our students, not every student probably could tell you their learning goal, we're working toward that. But again, I had a teacher down Discovery Drive, which is our five-year-old hall, and she told me that she, one of her students came up in the morning before class started, tugging on her saying, "I know my goal. I worked on my goal. I wanna, I want to prove to you my goal, that I can do it." And the child actually exceeded what their expectation was on their goal. And that's happening in other classrooms. So, are we where we need to be? No, but we're on our journey, and we do have our vision in sight. A lot of the others is, again, thinking about those targets that cycle through. I think one of the other major things that I would say that has been a change for us is going from that whole group instruction to having a balanced model of instruction. When you think about standards base, it's not whole group, it's not independent, it's not small group, it's all of that. And it's having a balance of that when you need it. And we're continually learning. If you had told me day before yesterday that you could do individualized instruction through whole group, I would've said, I don't believe it. Went to a training yesterday, had two teachers with me, and we actually saw a model of whole-group instruction that was individualized. So, you know, we're continually learning. We're learning new things, and we're learning how to customize learning for your child, even though it might seem like it's whole group, and they're just doing whole group, and it's the same thing that it's always been. If you really get to looking at the background and all the work that goes in, a lot of that whole group, it can be individualized. So if you see whole group, it might be everybody's getting the same dose, but I don't think that will be happening very often. Ms. Kathy, and I usually tag-team, so what do you think? Can you think of anything? Assessments, we are in the process of building our assessments. We're working with Ms. Gina Chambers on that. Okay, yes, thank you. We have contracted with Educate, and that will be our reporting system. Our report cards will be printed from Educate. All of our scale work, the learning targets are in Educate. Teachers go in, student evidence can be put into Educate. Task for a student to do will be in Educate, and it's accessible 24/7 to the student, the teacher, and the parent. Now, parents, you don't have access yet, because we felt like we needed to provide some training for you on using it. So at parent-teacher conferences, we'll have a sign-up sheet for you to sign up, to attend some trainings, so we can give you access to your child's Educate account, so that you can, it's, I don't wanna say it's like Edline, 'cause it's not, but how you could access Edline before you'll be able to access your students' growth through Educate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. Okay, a couple of weeks ago, we sent out a letter to parents asking for you to write down any questions and send them to us. So several, several parents submitted questions, and I'm gonna let Ms. Amy Court write, and Ms. Amy win. They're gonna go through some of those questions and answer those for you.
All right, the first question was, why was this new system put in place? We think we can reach all students. There has been an achievement gap. We talked about, you heard them talk earlier, about how, you know, if we don't pick up from where they left off, there's gonna be a gap in their learning. We're gonna prepare them for, you know, success in the global economy. Our world has changed, and we need to prepare them to be ready to go out and get jobs and be successful. It customizes the learning, and it's what's right. We've done a lot of research. It is what's right. All right, the standards. First of all, you heard them mention earlier that the Common Core State Standards are our new standards that we will be implementing here in Arkansas and in several other states of the United States. And science standards will be released soon, and social studies, hopefully, to follow. But right now, we only have our Common Core State Standards for literacy and math. All right, teacher teams unpack the standards. I was on that committee, several people in this room, I see, that were part of the unpacking. We had a consultant come in, her name is Gina Chambers, and she worked with us on taking our Common Core State Standards and putting them in everyday terms, so that the teachers can understand what the student is supposed to learn. And we took all of those, for all of the literacy, all of the math, kindergarten through, we're still working on seventh and eighth grade right now, but kindergarten through sixth grade. And first of all, we need to be able to read it and understand it, even for a new teacher coming in. Hopefully, we'll have, you know, teachers coming in, wanting to teach in our district. So hopefully, with that, they can understand what the student's supposed to learn. We also wrote assessments, sample assessments. We're continuing to write sample assessments. And this is the document that the teachers use to see what the students are supposed to be learning. And we just took that Common Core State Standards, and we fixed it up where it best suits our needs. They're organized into measurement topics, and on the back of your pink sheet, there is a copy of this. It looks a little bit like this. You see the Level 4, 5, and 6. Level 4 is fifth grade, Level 5 is sixth grade, Level 6 is seventh grade. So it's kinda, you know, trying to get that in your head is a little bit different. Your target score is the 3, okay? If your student reaches a 3 at a specific skill, that's the target, okay? Also, on there, you'll see a sample score of 4. There's nothing up there, but this is just what the document actually looks like. And then a 2, it just means they're not to that 3 yet, but that's just where they are in their learning. That's not a bad thing. If you see a 1, it's, the student still needs help with that skill from the teacher. It's not a bad thing. So if you see any, you see a report card come home, and it's got 1s, or it's got 2s, and you think, oh my goodness, my child is not learning, they don't get it, they don't have all 3s. 3s aren't A's. It doesn't work like that anymore. So just remember, that's just where they are in their learning, and it's a process. And so, I think Sarah mentioned something like that. You know, it may be an ongoing skill all year long, and they're not to where, you know, they could get that 3 yet. All right? And you can see this, just let you kinda look at that, and that kinda lets you know what the scale is set up. If they get a 4, they can do, they can actually show what they've learned in a new way. And, but you can kinda see that 3 is proficient, and that's what you're wanting to shoot
Okay, how do we, the parents wanna know, how do we know where our kids are as far as the grades go? Well, like Ms. Amy was saying, 3 is our target. That means they can do their work on their own and understand the concepts that they're supposed to be learning, and explain it to us in our conferences. So the 3 is the target. The 4 is that above and beyond, where they can take it and apply it in a different situation or a different activity, and extend that learning beyond the basic skill that they're supposed to master. The 2, it's important, because even though they're not quite at that proficient level, they're understanding that vocabulary that they need to know to be able to complete their tasks. So that's still important, even though it's not proficient. It's important for the students to be at that level, too. And 1, that just means the teacher needs to help them with things. They're not to that 2, they're not to the 3, but they're getting there. And like Ms. Amy said, none of these numbers are bad. It's the progression of their learning, okay? And in fact, the standards that are written are the ones they're supposed to have mastered by the end of the school year. So we're not really worried about those 1s and 2s right now, 'cause we're gonna get them up to the 3s. How do we know the kids are at the grade level? We use a variety of assessment results. Ms. Croggins was telling you about our NUIA testing, and that's individualized to the students, 'cause as they're taking the test, when they get questions right, it bumps them up to higher levels. And so, we actually know where they're working. If they're getting them wrong, it takes them down, and so we know what grade level they're working at. So that's helpful. And Educate that they're putting in place at Eastside, we're, at Brunson, we're exploring that to purchase for next school year, so that the parents can be involved in seeing their learning targets and where they are with their learning. The standards-based report card is gonna be coming out in two weeks at parent conferences. The learning goals that the students are supposed to meet this year will be on there with their current score of a 1, 2, 3, or 4, and when you come into conferences, you can discuss that with the teacher. We'll still have our two parent conferences every year that you can come. And progress reports. We, we did not send out at Brunson, we did not send out a progress report for math or literacy, because we're still trying to figure out how we wanna do that. So we're using their new red goal binders that you purchase to open house. They're supposed, students write down their learning objectives, the vocabulary that they need for the tasks, and any homework that's coming home. So you should be checking the homework, the goal binder every night, and the student should be bringing it home. And again, the report card will go out every quarter, and the progress report, we're still working on how we want that to look. So that will be coming out soon. Edline. Right now, science and social studies are still scoring on our standards reference system, so you'll see your As, Bs, Cs, and the percentages. Those are still going into Edline. Math and sci, math and literacy are not going into Edline. That's where you're gonna see the standards-based report cards when they come out. And the goal sheets should be checked, 'cause we're gonna keep you informed on those. But they're not going on Edline. It can be determined through a single skill. If a child starts out on a learning goal and they make a 1, it's not bad, but when they make the 2, we're gonna celebrate that learning, because they've gained more knowledge. And when they get to the 3, we're gonna celebrate that as well, because they're learning on their own, and they're gaining that knowledge, and it's gonna be more meaningful to them so that they can apply it in another situation next year or in a different classroom. So that's the progress for the, for the students. And it can be determined by them meeting their new learning goals. If a student sets a goal and they get their 3, they can move on to the next one. If they get a 3, they can move to the next one. We're gonna celebrate those, because they're moving away, they're moving along, they're meeting, they're meeting their goals, and they're ready for the next one, so we're gonna give them to them. And that's their progress there. They need, students will need to make a 3 to be considered proficient, and those are called hits. And they need to get 3 of those to demonstrate that they've really mastered it, so they can do it three times and get a 3, and then we know they're ready to move on. Preponderance of evidence, that's those 3 3s, and with the assessments. Okay, how is the work gonna be assessed? We have individual student conferences, so you sit down with a student, you decide on the goal that they want to learn together, okay? Then, they choose activities. It could be designing a poster, it could be creating a game. It's anything that they can do to show you they understand their learning goal. The completed activities are scored according to, according to those scales that Ms. Amy and the rest of the team worked on. and the rest of the team worked on. How often are they taken? When the students complete their activities, they get a score. And then they move on to their next activity. It could be a week, it could be a couple of days. It's when they finish their activity. And we talked, they have to reach that three. So it's not what grade do they have to get, they have to get to that proficient level of three. And they have to get their three hits, and it says right there, enduring skills, which means they need to be practiced a lot longer than other ones do.
All right, will there be tutoring? We do have extended day math tutoring available right now. The classes are full, and so we are doing that for math, because right now at Brunson, our biggest need is math. In the spring though, we will have math and literacy tutoring, and that will be for the students who qualify. And that is determined by last year's benchmark scores and recommendations from teachers. But if you're a parent and you're interested in your child being in the program, please just give us a call at Brunson and I can put them on the list. And we'll take them according to need. I take those test scores, I talk to the teachers, we break that down, and we look at what the biggest needs are. Is that pretty much it on that one? Oh, and the in-school tutoring, we have an interventionist coming in. She's gonna be working in literacy for the students who need that, so that's very helpful. We also have the Breakfast Club, we have math tutoring, and that's Ms. Deborah Jones. She takes those students to the library in the mornings before breakfast, and they get to work on math skills. And as long as funding is available, we will continue to do it. Here was a question from parents. We were first told that students would work at their own pace, but they're working in groups. How does that help and why are they in groups? First of all, students will work at their own pace, and that's kinda what the whole gist of this SBE thing is, and selecting their activities for their learning. But some instruction is whole group, and then some is going to be small group, and then there'll be some individual. They work in groups to help them achieve their goals, and of course to teach them to work with one another. But they're still going to be evaluated on an individual basis. So they may be doing a project with five other kids in their group, but not each child in the group is going to perform in the same way. So still, they're still going to get their individual scores, you know, four, three, two, one, depending on what the activity is, even if they're still working in groups. And it is definitely a necessary skill, I think that we all know this, to help them learn and be successful in the future. And teachers monitor the pacing, make sure the student is working at an appropriate pace. All right, SBE focuses pretty much math, science, literacy, and social studies, even though we only have the scales written for literacy and social studies right now. But it is going to be in effect for all core classes, and we're gonna eventually be developing scales for science and social studies. What does it teach the students? Personal responsibility for their learning. They know what they're learning and they know at what pace. And it happens in different ways and definitely at different times. All right, test and activities. There are many ways, and here are just a list. These are just some things that we came up with. Presentations, graphic organizers, essays, building, constructing, movie video, lots of technology, Ms. Amy's gonna talk about that in a minute. And there can still be some regular pen and paper assessments, or paper pencil assessments, or whatever. You know, some of the, we'll still do some of the old school styles of learning, but at the same time, there's a whole lot of new stuff out there. And they don't, this is so important, and it's something that we've all been stuck in. We think that we can send a study guide home for everything. There's not a study guide for life, I think we know that. You can't just memorize everything. We want them to know and to understand and to be able to use the skills. You know, take us the spelling test. For a student who's not good at spelling, you can memorize those words and you can come back and make a hundred on a spelling test. But in another week, if they can't spell any of those words in their writing, they did not learn it. And this whole program is designed for them to learn it, to know it, to be able to use it, and to apply it. That's very important. All right, Ms. Amy's gonna talk about technology.
We really like to use technology at Brunson, and we've got computers for the students. There's enough computers in the computer lab, each student can be on a computer in the classrooms. We've got a mobile laptop station that they can use. We're going on the internet to do research. There's a big push for research in these new Common Core State Standards, so you're gonna see a lot more of that with your students. We have purchased MyBigCampus, where the students can go on and it's almost like at college when you're doing your online learning. You can put a discussion question up, the kids can answer to it, they can create a blog, they can send emails. This year at Brunson, we're gonna be purchasing Compass, which Eastside is already using. It's an intervention program that takes the results from their NUIA test and builds them the interventions that they need, or if they are where they need to be, it will create enrichment lessons for them. So it's gonna be individualized to the students to help them further their learning. We've got a mobile iPad station as well, the students are pulling those out to help with research and doing some other things on those. Digital cameras, we've got video cameras, we've got camera cameras, so they can use those to create their projects as well. They're using presentation software. They'll be creating PowerPoints and doing other things to demonstrate their learning. The math classes have Promethean boards, and those are interactive, I don't wanna say whiteboards, but the teachers can pull up lessons and the students can go up and use a stylus, and they can do what they need to do, and then the teacher can print everything off from there. So it's all on the board, it's interactive for them. We've got Kindles in all the literacy classrooms and some of the content classrooms for the kids to learn. And this year we've started, you might hear your kids mention BYOD. That stands for Bring Your Own Device. And the students can bring their own Kindles, their own iPads, even their iPhones, if they have them, their smartphones, and use those in the classroom when they're doing research, when they're on MyBigCampus, posting discussions and things like that. We're letting them use their own devices. If they have them, they should be able to use them. And any new technologies that are developed, we're gonna try and get what we can get, because the kids are competing in a world that we don't even know when they graduate what's gonna be available for them to use. Technology changes so quickly that most of the stuff we have in our rooms are already outdated, but we're gonna, we're gonna use them to the best that we can. And when new stuff comes out, if we have the money, we're gonna try and get it. Motivation. What do we do to motivate kids? Well, they love video games. But in video games, you can't move to the next level till you master the level before. And that's the same way it's gonna work in the classroom. If you're not mastering your goals, you can't move to the next ones. And that's, they're gonna see their friends moving along and they're gonna wanna move with them. And that is the best way to motivate them, is to put it in their own hands. And we're gonna give it second.
Okay, believe it or not, since we've put the learning on the student and students are responsible for their own learning, many parents have been calling, wanting to know about homework. So Ms. Hopson's gonna come up and tell you, how can I help my child at home? There's still things you can do to help them.
Yes, please, go ahead, that'd be awesome. Okay, you can check their goal binders for vocabulary to practice in upcoming tests and projects. Make sure they're doing their homework, which should begin in their goal binders. Encourage them to read every day twenty to thirty minutes. Talk with them about what they've read, current events, et cetera. Review math facts with them so that they are fluent with math facts. How can parents be involved with this? Check your child's goal binder. Check your child's orange folder for updates. Come in to visit or volunteer in classrooms. Check in with your child and their teacher for updates. Contact your child's teacher for more information. Once we get Educate purchased, come to the training we will provide and check Educate frequently. What communication will be used, especially if my child is not meeting his or her goals? Red goal binders, learning goals, activities, vocabulary, and announcements needed for each class. Orange folders, notes and updates about what is happening. Emails and phone calls from the teacher. Parent-teacher conferences twice a year. We realize the communication aspect of this change is not where it should be. We appreciate your patience while we work through the changes. How will I know that SBE is best for my child? Will SBE be enough when I consider my child's future? Your child will have gained the following. A deeper understanding in their learning. Valuable teamwork skills by working in groups. Valuable problem-solving skills by having to work through activities rather than memorizing facts. Personal responsibility for planning their own learning path. Accountability for having to explain their learning. There's, excuse me, determination for having to stick with a goal until it is achieved. All of these will be invaluable to the students as they move into a fast-paced world. Do you think SBE is a better way for the students to get a better understanding of what they are learning? Absolutely. Students will conference with the teacher, set their learning goals, and will have some choice in how they demonstrate meeting the goals. They will know upfront what the goal is, how they can demonstrate learning, and by when.
Okay, if we didn't answer your question tonight and you want to find a place to get more information, I'm going to, you can always Google standards-based education, but here are the two websites. Eastside visited the Adams 50 in Colorado, and there's their website. And also, in the end of this month, a group from Brunson's going to Lindsay, California to tour their school and find out more, and if you're interested, there's their website. And I know this is fast and you can't write it down. So tomorrow, this will be on our Brunson website. So if you will go to the Brunson website, you can get all this information. If you have, at this time, if there are any additional questions, and I know it's a small group, but this would be a good time, if you have any questions, just write them on your index cards and pass them to the end of the owls, and we'll be there to collect them and we'll go over those questions. Any questions you can think of, now's a good time. And I have a panel that's gonna come and we're gonna answer any questions you have, hopefully. And if we don't know the answer, we'll, we'll find it out and let you know. Questions, any questions? Now's the time.
Okay, the first question that we have is, what tool will be used to know that the child has moved on to the next level?
All right, who would like to answer that?
Okay, Ms. Fickel, can you come over here so I can see you? Will you read it again?
It says, what tool will be used to know that the child has moved on to the next level?
Okay, if you heard me mention earlier that we wrote scales, and that was our Common Core State Standards, where we organized that into scales, and it is actually written out very clearly for us. It gives the skill that we're supposed to teach, and it tells what the student does if they are at a one. Then, if you look up on our document, and there's a little bit of an example there, but it's not the best, then it says exactly what the child does if they're at a level two, okay? So I can actually look at that document that I have, and the level two is the vocabulary. So I know if the student, I can give them just a quick little vocabulary test or something like that, and I know that they're at a two. Then I'm gonna take one of the assessments and I'm gonna let them try that three, okay? And it says exactly what the student has to do to get the three. And once again, the document will move up to the four. So we go by that document and it lets us know if a student has mastered it. So that's, I hope that that answered your question.
And that, that question may have been in reference to a level as in all of the measurement topics within a level, and of course, within Educate also, we will know when they have completed all of the measurement topics within a learning level. And they do not have to wait until the next August to start working at the next learning level. They'll just move right on into it.
The next question is about transitioning from Brunson to middle school. What happens when the kids that will currently be at a current grade five, what happens when they transfer to middle school and they're not involved in the standards-based and they're going back to a traditional classroom?
Well, we are looking at, in fact, the middle school leadership team just met this afternoon, and we will be looking at this concept moving up as the students move up. That's our vision at this time.
The next question is, if a college requires a GPA, how would this program fit your into college, the transition to college?
If the colleges don't get on board with us, there is a way to transfer the scale work into a GPA. So this, this concept is really taking root across the nation, and so I'm sure higher ed is, is going to have to get on board with this also. In fact, actually, they will know more from a student graduating from a school that has scale work than they would just a regular, a number. Because what is an A anyway? What did they learn? Do we know? Did they already have that information, have that knowledge before they took that test to get that A or whatever? So there's, there's still some unanswered questions there, but like I said, with this initiative being all across the nation, I look for that not to be an issue.
That was the last question that was submitted.
This is a small group. Any other questions?
Yeah. Um, well, he should have his goals written in the binder, okay? And that's what we're working on in class. I know in my classroom, they set two reading goals, two writing goals, and a spelling goal. That's five goals to be working on, and they've been working on them for a couple of weeks. And they're doing, they're doing a couple of activities for each one, and I sit down and conference with them, you know, this one you got a three on, you did really good on your analysis for this, this, and this. Whereas on this one, you didn't quite make it to a three, because you didn't get that higher level thinking. And so if that were Mark, he would take it back and he'd try it again, and you know, we'd talk about it after he tried it again. And so that's really, it's all, it's kinda hard to have those discussions on a daily basis with parents, and so that's why we keep it in the goal binder. Does that answer?
And later on, after we purchase Educate, you'll be able to go online and you'll be able to tell exactly where Mark is, what he's working on, and where he needs to go next. Any other questions?
Okay. First of all, that's a great question. And what I'm thinking along those lines is, you know, you don't wanna give the kid the same test over and over again. It seems that maybe if you gave him an assessment and they didn't learn it that way, we've gotta come up with another way to teach them. We've gotta come up with a different way. That means that child just doesn't learn best that way. So the first thing I would say that we would do is we would try every different possible way to see if we can get that child to learn that skill, first of all. But if we see that a child is not progressing like that they, like they're supposed to, I think that we've just gotta keep going. And at this point, am I to understand correctly, they will still advance to the next grade, because this has not been implemented throughout the whole district, but yet they would still possibly be working on skills at a lower level. So like, if you've got a child in the fifth grade, they may not be all working on fifth grade skills. And, and those are some, some things that we're working on, but I think the goal of this is to continue and stick with those skills and find different ways until the child masters it. Is that, did that help?
Is that, did that help?
Okay. Okay. Oh, here, here's Ms. Sarah.
And I'm glad you said something about two-point. Because a year ago, I was where these ladies are in my thinking. And that's not bad. Don't get me wrong, because we've had a little bit more time to digest this. And a year ago, I would have told you everything had to be a three. But actually, it doesn't have to be because in our scale work, that two is the vocabulary. I know this is an answer to your question, but I'm going to get to your question too. So if I, if my goal is for that child to learn the vocabulary, the maximum achievable score might actually be a two. They might not be able to get a three or a four. It may just be a two. So, you know, that's going to come through conversations and, and growing everyone, all shareholders, all of us learning, you know, because that, the vocabulary, sometimes that's going to be your goal for that child at that time. Differentiated instruction is something, is part of this. So like Ms. Amy was saying, a key component is learning styles and interest inventories. And what she was saying, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. Is, we don't want children to become discouraged. We think that's what's happening now. So what we would want to do is provide those opportunities. Ms. Jo, is that you sitting in the back? Ms. Jo shares this story and of course, she teaches a level two, which was formerly first grade. But in working with students, she said, "In being, in the past, we have been, we had 178 days. We don't have but two days to spend on this. You've got to get it. We're moving on. If you don't get it, you're not getting it and we're leaving that gap and we're leaving that hole." And she said, "Now, to be able to say to a student, 'That's okay. I'm going to be here with you and we're going to work through this until you get it.'" That encourages the students. That gives them hope. "I'm not going to get left behind. Instead, you're going to be here with me, coaching me, making sure that I get it and you're going to not give up. You're going to find what it takes for me to be able to, to learn that certain skill."
Well, and I just wanted to add too, if a student is struggling with a certain skill and they may start showing those signs of frustration because they're not getting to that proficient level, it's okay to take a break. Stop the skill, move on to something different, and go back to it after they've had time to process it. That's what's good about this. There's no, with SBE, there's no set time limits. There's no set, "You've got to get it. You've got to get it now. We're going to keep doing it and beat it into your head." Take a break. Let the student relax from it and then go back to it with a new, open mind.
Any other questions?
Okay.
They, they sit down with the students to do the goals.
Yes.
And you're guiding them on what they really need to learn to get. They're not going to sit while.
Right. Right. And you know, it, yeah, and it's, and it's kind of misleading to say that we let them set their own goals and their own learning pace. But we do, we give them some choices, but at some point, that teacher's going to intervene and say, "Now, Mark, it's time for you to move on to, you know, two-digit multiplication or whatever." We're not going to just let them sit there and do addition facts, you know, for a long time. We're going to move them on.
And what I did when I set goals for the kids this last time, I actually had my scale work out in front of me and I said, "This is what you need to learn." Okay? You can choose, and I gave them like five choices. You can work on this, 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 or that. Why don't you pick out two? And then they would pick those out and we'd talk about what they had to be able to do for those learning goals. And so I'm not going to put 50 million choices in front of a student. It's too overwhelming. But I will scale it down and give them like a couple choices. And I have it right in front of me so I can show them. This is what you have to learn. And then they get a few choices.
Did that help you? And we don't have all the answers and, and this is a challenge for us as well. And I appreciate you all being patient and understanding with us because this is all new to us also. And we're going to do the best we can because you know what? We're committed to it and we know it's what's right for our students. It's, it's time for a change and we're on board and we're committed. And you, you don't have to wait to parent-teacher conference time to come see us. Just drop by anytime. Ms. Paula's in the front office, Ms. Paula and Ms. Junie, and they'll stick a visitor tag on you and send you right down the hall. So feel free to drop in and visit us at any, any time you feel like it. We'll be glad to have you. Are there any other questions? Also, on that pink sheet, that's an evaluation sheet. And I would appreciate it if you could fill that out and just drop it on the front tables as you leave, but don't leave just yet. We have some door prizes. Sorry.
I have one question.
Okay.
Is, is there a timeframe that the district's thinking about moving that into the high schools and this level? When is that going to happen?
I'm going to let Ms. Johnson answer that question about the high school.
We, we are having, in fact, for years, we have been having these discussions and our vision is to move it on up to the high school. Our next step, our middle school is, is beginning to do some exploration and possibly looking at, at that, for them to at least have some lab classrooms for next year. So we are looking at, at easing this on up. Now, how quickly, I don't, at this point, I don't know. I don't know if it will be as, as one group moves on up or, and we don't know yet what waivers will be out there. When we get to high school, you know, it's a different animal with credits. And so we'll have to see what waivers are available. See, we're having to do this charter because in order for us to do some of the things we want to do, we have to have waived some of the standards and rules. So we are looking at that as, as part of our vision, but we can't answer all of those questions yet. But we will continue to have these meetings and, and get input from parents as well.
Have you waived benchmark through customization?
No, that's, that's not waivable. No. In fact, this, you know, we have a different test coming up in 2014 with the Common Core Standards. There's a test that goes along with it. So we'll have more, we'll have different vocab, testing vocabulary when that comes out. But no, the testing requirements are not waived. And we want the accountability, not just that one test. That's why you hear us talk about NAWIA, COMPASS. We still do DRA, DIBELS. I know some of that stuff doesn't mean anything to you, but we want to keep a check on where our students are and what they can, what they know and what they can do.
When we started this process, on the accountability part, that's the first thing. They made sure they told us, "You cannot waive accountability." Which like Ms. Marilyn said, we didn't want to do that. But what they did allow us, we got a waiver that from the get-go, we were told by lawyers, by people at the state level, "You will not get that waiver. There is no way you will be given it." Well, we did get the waiver. We got several, but the one I think was the big thing to overcome. You know, we're not against accountability and we're not against state assessments, but we think state assessments ought to be given to students when they're ready for the assessment. That we should not be assessing students if we know they're not ready for that assessment. So what we were able to do is, our waiver is a conditional waiver, but it allows us to determine the student's readiness level for the state assessment. And then they would be assigned to the grade of that state assessment for assessment purposes only because we don't have grade assignments anymore, but so that they could take, we get labels on test booklets and the test booklets are different. So that we would get the right label and the student would get the right test booklet. So if we had a student that was down Productive Parkway, which is our level four, formerly third grade, and we didn't think that they were ready for the state third grade benchmark, then we can actually assign that child to second grade for testing purposes only, not retention, not retain, not move in halls, just in the state reporting system. And then that student would not take the state benchmark, but they would take the ITBS. So that was a, I'm telling you, that was a waiver that we were told, "You will not get that waiver." But we did. And that's a ooh-hoo to our state Board of Education because they realized too, that we should not be assessing children when they're not ready to be assessed.
Let, let me make some comments to close this out. First of all, let me thank Brunson and their staff and all of you for showing up again, showing up here tonight. But let me say this. This is way outside the box. And let me ask this question. Why is it okay before kids start school for them to learn at their own pace? And when they get to school, if they don't learn when everybody else will learn, something's wrong with them? Think about that. All of you have kids or those of you who do have kids, they don't all learn to walk at the same time, nor talk, nor party train before they get to school. And that's okay. You're just happy that when they learn it. So why do we put them all in a box and say, "At this time, you're going to learn this whether you're ready or not?" And when in educational, are we going to stop doing that to kids? We find them where they are, take them to where they want or need to be when they're ready to be there. Just that simple. It cuts out a lot of frustration and it motivates those kids. And it doesn't hold those kids back who are ready to move on because they're giving the same dose of medicine of those kids who are not ready. Is it different? Yes. Is it challenging? Yes. Is it frustrating? Yes. It's all of those things. But I think what we have to keep in mind and we have to ask ourselves, the compelling question, is it the right thing to do for kids? And if you can say no to that, then you don't love kids. It's challenging. But our teachers have stepped up to the plate and they're ready to move forward with this. And we're probably the only school district in the state of Arkansas that's doing this right now. But I don't care about that. We're, I'm the superintendent of the Warren School District. We care about our kids. And these other school districts are going to catch on. It's customized learning and we're meeting the kids at their needs and taking them wherever they need to be when they're ready to be there. It's just that simple. I thank you again for your attendance and please continue to help us move through this process. It's something new, but keep in mind, it's the best thing for kids.
Okay. We're going to give away door prizes. The first one is Ms. Joyce Lefieux. Ms. Joyce Lefieux. Hand it to us. Hand it to her.
Yay, Joyce!
Ms. Regina, will you pull me out another number?
Number 11.
Number 11 is Thomas Lefieux.
Woo-hoo!
Our only student that showed up.
Number 21.
Number 21 is Ms. Sandra Howling.
Y'all to the Sonic!
You can get a prize.
Okay. And number three, lucky number three.
Ms. Joy Jackson.
Walmart.
A Walmart gift card.
Number 22.
Number 22 is Ms. Lauren Cox.
Yay! That's an El Palacio meal. Okay. And this is our last Walmart.
This is our last one.
No, it's our last Walmart gift card.
Last Walmart gift card.
Number eight.
Number eight is Mr. Don Whittmore.
One more. All right. And our last, this is our last one tonight. Number 12.
Ms. White.
Molly's Diner.
Ooh, another good place to eat.
Yeah. Thank you all for coming and as I said, please feel free to stop by and visit us.
And we need to thank El Palacios and Molly's for donating for us today too.
Okay. Hey, and please leave your pink sheets on the front tables.
Great job. Great job. We appreciate you so much for, for watching today. SalineRiverChronicle.com's presentation of standards-based education here at Warren High School. Again, we will try to get this on-demand to you within the next 24 hours. But if you, so if you weren't able to watch the entire thing, we'll try to have the entire thing for you coming up, at least by tomorrow somewhere in there. But again, thank you though for watching and we will see you. Our next live stream cast, of course, will be this coming Friday night. And we will be live for the Union Bank Saline River Shootout between Warren and Monticello. Again, Warren and Monticello coming up Friday night at 6:50 PM. That's when our Armstrong Wood Products pre-game show starts, so check us out. We'll see you Friday night. Have a great night, everybody.